...establishing Dillon County Board of Assessment and Field, providing the dues thereof and providing for the field they're flowing to the South Carolina Administrative Court. Anybody? Rest of the...
Next up.
Yep, we have the bill for the petition or the petition of Dillon County Planning Commission. See an ordinance establishing a board of zoning appeals for Dillon County, South Carolina, to implement the comprehensive plan of Dr. Pursuit to the South Carolina Local Government Comprehensive Plan Enabling Act of 1994. And also an ordinance by Dillon County Amendment in the act in Dillon County Building Plan. Okay, we're down to number five.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to know if there's records that no one here has been in any of those hearings. This is Bush, clerical note down. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Number five, new building or a day, neighbors helping neighbors before you.
Chairman, I'd like to motion that.
Did everybody for me, you know, the neighbors helping neighbors, I think everybody knew.
I got a motion. We want to donate him $2,000.
Yeah.
I'm gonna give him a red coat, $2,000, Minister.
Councilman, uh, Coward, made a motion to give neighbors helping neighbors $2,000. Does that suck it that motion?
I'll say it.
Okay, is that a suck? All in favor, raise your right hand. Here's the down to five D now. Timber sale for C and D landfill vertical extension.
Mr. Chairman, I'll look, Mr. Gaddy and Mr. Booze, you know, that part, this regarding property out of land fields, actually the timber we're trying to cut is with a vertical expansion is supposed to go. Uh, main surface office to get cleaned off so we can go with the broker expansion. We've had Earl Dunn to go out and look at it. It's a lot of this, I kind of scrub timber, but he do have a couple pockets of decent timber. And his suggestion to us was to go as a pay and cut agreement where they cut it, take it to the mill, then they'll pay us for it. And he said he'd handle that transaction for us if we wanted to.
Is there any idea on what they can pay us?
No, I don't. He didn't give us a price. He just said since it's a small tract, it's quite a good contract about to cut.
What's that? What you got, what you motion, what you motion?
Well, in order to sell this, this timber, C and D landfill for vertical expansion, it requires a motion, we have a motion to do it.
How about a motion to resell this timber? It has to come off the land before we complete the landfill is passed.
That's it. Okay, that's it. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna talk about it a little bit.
Okay.
Since this county property won't be appropriate to have it bid it out, I mean, see how much it rains, it's going to one man's beat. I mean, I'm, you know, you've been around this for example. He told me he had some timber one time, he sold it, and he said $125,000 from the top bid to bottom bid. So, you don't think it'd be wise of us to get it bid it out and, you know, see what the offer is?
I mean, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, it's probably like 15 acres or something like that. I think Earl's gonna really, I guess, submit to bid it out to us.
I mean, if he did it out, that would be, I think, would be the right way, and then, you know, it might be better to go with that way, what you're talking about.
Yeah, and I, I asked him about that, 'cause I really wanted him to have it.
We sold the timber our farm, and a local guy offered $10,000. The only guy on the, offered 65, and man told me, said, "It's frosty, we should wash it through, because it's a bunch of debris that timber."
Yeah.
I think by that being county property, we should, we do the right thing, they may put it out for bids. I mean, I don't mind how we're doing it, 'cause he knows what he's doing, he knows the bids, you know?
But I, I think he said, it's such a small tract, he didn't think anybody actually would win it.
Well, we can't get nobody, yeah, we just have to go to what the guy, I mean, I'd be mine.
That's not what he said, but he said, "Actually, what they do is cut it, take it to the mill, that way, and then they pay us as soon as they're done."
And just because that would be it?
Yeah, well, we want to try to get it off quick we can, 'cause sooner we get it done, we can kind of, our case can go ahead and.
It's in fact, when we get over here.
Now, Mr. Pinkley, um, Mr. Gaddy and I discussed this previously, and as I understand it, this gentleman is going to go out and get prices for people doing it, but it'll be take and pay. You're gonna take it to the mill, and they're gonna pay it, and then they're gonna pay you.
Just do it both ways.
So, but if, if the county wants to bid as they can, but Mr. Gaddy deemed it to be a single source procurement, that he meant the amount of land, the so small 15 acres. Now, a lot of acres the county just bought, was cut, it's the, um, blocking scrap metal property out there, before they sold. But, well, Mr. Pinkley, I mean, Mr. Gaddy would say it's a matter of convenience in getting it off quickly, rather than so much a matter of price. Again, it's a take and pay. If you do it on a take and pay basis, what they take off, they'll pay for.
I see what, there's a lot of timber coming in this county, I know that.
Yeah, I think.
I'm saying, we want right by the taxpayers.
But, but he, he says such a small tract, he not.
He's a good guy, he'll do what's right, but I just feel like, my opinion, that's just my opinion.
But I, I said, "Suggestion, but it's a cut and pay." He said he can handle that for us.
Anybody have any more discussion on this? Have we, have we, the governor, the governor, the governor?
I think you could call for another vote after we had a discussion, Mr. Chairman.
That's good, I mean, they had a governor, they were much talking.
Yeah, yeah, I ain't got no problem.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what they did, that's why it's much to me.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
It's got a suck, but it hasn't passed.
No, it ain't passed, that's right.
So, we need to re-vote it?
Yes, Mr..
Continue to put on.
I think you need to re-vote, after Mr. Howard said he wanted to have comments first.
Yeah, yeah.
So, he had his comments, I think, Mr., you have a motion, a second, Mr. Pinkley, I think you have to call for a vote again.
If he can kind of give us a rough idea what he thought it would bring, then we might could come back to the table and say, "Well, you know, that sounds pretty good for what we did."
Take it.
Yes, sir.
Take and pay. Write that down to me, I don't know.
Well, if they cut four trees, you can be paid for four trees.
We will or he will?
You will, but of course, he'll charge a commission, he's gonna charge something to do it, but he will tell you exactly how much timber was cut off of it, and exactly how much they were paid, and then, of course, the man cutting's gotta make a profit, and the man selling's gotta make a profit, so you're not gonna get 100% of what they paid for the mill, but this could be based on that.
He included the timber every tree, or is it said by the plan?
They could probably say it's by the plan. Actually, if you want, they'll cut it the way that the mill's making it pay.
So, if we lose anything, it, it would be at the, at the person that's cutting, his expense would be higher than someone else's, 'cause we're gonna get, the weight is gonna be the same price, whoever cut it, right, take the pay?
You could, if you want to, you could hire a fourth or get it approved, advertise it in the paper, get bids in, require a bid bond, and sell it that way.
I bet people just come up, tell us what it's gonna bring for, and what they cut it, or what he estimates it'll bring, you know?
Well, he could give us the estimate, but I, I think, he's saying the tract's so small that you're not gonna get somebody to come in here and bid on it.
Why, the timber guy makes a lot of money with them tracts like that.
It's not much, 'cause I mean, I've seen out there.
I don't think he has going around talking to people about the timber, really.
I didn't even see timber, or cut that, but all the way that looked at it, but Earl said they want some pockets of timber on back, probably nothing, maybe, maybe a couple acres of good timber, so, and the rest of it's kind of scrubbing.
Any, any more discussion before?
One more thing I'd like to say.
Okay.
I believe it's probably got timber, and I guarantee you, he puts it out, don't you for the bid, but if you know how them timber guys, they, I mean, they out there, you know, mark, you know?
So, do we make a motion that we get three people to come look at it, then take the highest and go from there? Do we do that?
You could make a motion that, well, I think if you make a motion, you probably should do request for proposals, I don't think you want to actually do a bid, because you know, a bid means somebody can tell you, give you a gross price, they're gonna pay you to take it, and that, but Gaddy said that's hard to do, you could ask for request for proposals, but you ask for proposals, request for proposals.
Maybe during the day, they'll hit you some bids, though.
You're gonna have to do it one way or another, you either have to advertise under procurement, that's option number one. Option number two is to do, do it as a single source procurement, which is what Mr. Gaddy recommending, by letting this gentleman sell for you, pay them a commission, and of course, people cut it, they pay the commission, and you'll get what's left over. That's Mr. Gaddy's proposal, but if you want to bid it out, you certainly can do that.
Well, if the council doesn't feel that this is right, then, well, I think we'll advertise, and the people, anybody else to bid, give us a price, and we'll go for the highest price.
There you go. Mr. Gaddy will get a fourth, and he'll bid.
Make that a motion.
Yeah, give that a motion.
I'll make a motion if we put it up for advertising, or get, go to the highest bid.
It's a suck.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
I'm glad it's true.
Okay, we're down to aisle C.
Another question? Um, there's one in your pocket that was put in today for, um, American Cancer, the Relay for Life is this next weekend, um, so they were asking for a donation, and the other one is Makia Murphy, who is competing in the, um, Miss Richland County, or she's competing in South Carolina, and she's just asking for donations to help her, um, with business ads that she needs to put in. And Harold Moody has said that he will give $50 from his recreation for Makia.
And Ms. Murphy, if I may add, graduated from Dillon High School, and before the natives there to jump on the bandwagon, she worked right here, see right, if anybody wants to get a talk to her. She's Dillon County native, she's working right down the street here, before, you know, we have, people don't tell us she doesn't live here, she just goes to school there.
$20 donation.
She's a fine, she's a fine young lady.
We're gonna do, we're gonna do the American Cancer Society, of course, and do.
We'll do them all at the same time, because.
We'll do, we'll do the same.
The American Cancer Society, still making requests.
We have for each.
We don't want the same time, just give each, we'll give each.
Okay.
25 for the council's side. Anybody else?
I do 25 each.
Probably you got nothing.
Yeah, we broke.
Y'all just sit there and be quiet. Now, gentlemen, this is something separate from what Ron Barfield had in mind, because he contacted me, went for the county, the not, Recreation Bureau, let him get himself to the county. And this is something separate, that ain't his deal, that ain't, is that wrong?
No.
Let's stop, okay.
This is Melissa Thompson.
Okay, well, that's something different. But I thought he, we lay on that.
She's got on who you can sponsor, me and the Big Brother's team by sending a donation, so this is her team.
It's all going to be this place, you know?
We're down, um, number five, now, five D, Dillon County Free Medical Clinic.
Mr. Chairman, we got a request from the Dillon County Free Medical Clinic, they're having a banquet.
Excuse me, Mr. Young. Mr. Chairman, I stand to be corrected, I don't think, I know we had a motion and a second, but I don't think we approve it in advance. We need to recruit, yes, or we need to approve it in advance.
There's no motion, um.
I make a motion.
I say a second. All in favor?
Thanks, sir.
We have it out of Dillon County Free Medical Clinic.
Mr. Chairman, we got a request from Free Medical Clinic, um, they're having a banquet, and they gave an outline here of what, what they do with their funds, and the number of people that, actually, act of testimony, I think, that we're working with, and you can donate to sponsor level up to as little as $99, up to $1,000 and up, which will be, 99 will be a friend, a friend of Kennedy, and platinum will be $1,000 or more. And basically, if you have a name, you're brought to, this language, just to be honest, whether we participate at all.
Make a motion.
Uh, anybody want to make a motion, if, if this, if this comes from, from the county, or is it a individual donation, or the issue?
You can do it either way.
If you pick the county.
Yes.
I have a motion, and we give him $1,000.
Is that a suck?
Free Medical Clinic.
Your motion, look forward to giving him $1,000, whoever suck. Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, we're down to number six now, old bid, County Shelter, but intake building.
This is one on, I think y'all voted back, uh, July, and it started off as like a 20 by 40 shelter with a little storage building, uh, and the cost of that building was about 12,000, I think his council approved that, and shortly after, I think, I'm gonna want to go to a 30 by 50, and the cost of it's about 23,900. I thought we want to pay for this out of the 1% sales tax money, after approving funding. And Doug said he has 5,000 donation.
We'll look forward to this, so probably about 18,000.
Do we have, um, do we have a motion, uh, on a building, County Shelter, intake building, can you, as far as?
Make a motion.
Okay, is that a suck?
Suck.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, we're down to number seven, our financial report.
Um, this is as of end of the month, March, currently, we run a negative of 803,000, 878 dollars, um, and for that figure, I think we paid 250,000 to Harbor Freight for the retail store that came out of that, and also, we have received our quarterly income from the state, and so we had those two kind of, should have caught close to wash out.
Anybody have any questions, anybody have questions?
I'm glad we're getting it in, Harbor Freight.
That's it, we're down to number eight now, for the ordinance reading, you know, do this by trial and error, the third reading, an ordinance, an ordinance establishing Dillon County Board of Assessment and Field, providing the dues thereof and providing for the fields they're flowing to the South Carolina Administrative Court.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have a comment about that, um, I feel, uh, there's three ordinances here, and we discussed this before, the three ordinances deal with the planning commission, um, the, um, and they're all, they're, they're all the same. Planning commission, this one deals with the, um, Board of Assessment Field, and the third one deals with the tax. But, and this comment's gonna apply to all three, I'm by making it, because all three of these provides that the, um, people serve during the term of the council member, district by district, and you'll see later on in the agenda, I think I've got all the seats are vacant now, under this, the ordinance, so either tonight, or some social meeting, you gentlemen will have to make appointments to these three boards, which would be one for each of the districts. One thing I'd like to add, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of council, this would take an amendment to the ordinance, and then you have to pass ordinance as amended, I would like to add the following language, um, which goes after, in relation to appointment, it would go after in the one, two, three, four, fifth line, it would be added, and it would say, "And the title of their successor is appointed and qualified." Now, the law already provides that, but there gets to be some confusion about not having that in the ordinance, following back to the state law. You have to go back and read the state law then, and just, I think a good idea to put that into ordinance, and the reason for that is, of course, that new council members start the term January 2nd, in odd years, and so, if the term ends on January 2nd, and it would, it's nice just to say they continue to serve until their successor is appointed and qualified, which we know is gonna be some period of time, probably could be the Fourth Wind in January, if not the Fourth, uh, Wind in February, just a practical matter. So, I would like to suggest that somebody make a motion to amend it, to add, "Each member shall serve during the term of office of the county council member who nominated the appointed member, and until their successor is appointed and qualified," just to make it clear to the person you appointed, that he'll stay there until you make another appointment. So, I'd like, if council meetings are appropriate, somebody make a motion to amend the ordinance, to insert that.
So, we're open for a motion.
You asked one question, sir?
Sir?
That's it, one question. Do they have to live in your district?
That's only live in Dillon County. Where's Rip? That's your rent in Dillon County. Do not have to live in your district, Mr. Scott.
If we have a motion to add that to the resolution, I, I can't recall everything he said, but y'all heard what he said.
And until their successor is appointed and qualified.
Make a motion, sir, until their successor appointed and qualified.
Mined it.
Is that a suck?
I say it.
Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Now, it'll be asked for a motion to approve the ordinance as amended.
Sir, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance as amended.
Is that a suck?
Suck.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
You got me, damn it, sir.
Okay, I'm leaving.
I'm gonna get ready.
Do I have to, we have to get to the one?
Mr. Chairman, you need to do these one by one, because they're all different ordinances.
Okay. The third reading, an ordinance establishing Dillon County Board of Assessment and Field, providing the dues thereof, and providing the fields they're flowing to the South Carolina Administrative Court, requires a motion.
Mr. Chairman, the same motion, though, that we amended, by adding the language that's same part, to use, identical, as you said that, "And until their successor is appointed and qualified."
Sir, I make the motion to, I make the motion on the ordinance you just read, to the successor appointed and qualified.
Okay, is the motion, is that a suck?
Suck.
Is that a suck, if I am, raise your right hand.
And now you need a motion to approve the ordinance as amended.
Make a motion, sir, to prove them, ordinance as amended.
Is that a suck, please? Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand. Down to, um, shall we?
C.
B, third reading, amendment to an ordinance for the creation and celebration of the Dillon County Planning Commission.
Same motion to amend, to add the same language in the same place, and until this successor is appointed and qualified.
Is the motion?
Make the motion, sir, until the, until the successor is appointed and qualified.
Is that a suck?
You're wrong.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Now make a motion to, uh, pass an ordinance as amended.
Okay, we have a motion.
You have a motion, sir, to pass the ordinance as amended.
Okay, is that a suck?
Suck.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
And Mr. Chairman, I apologize to council for not making that explicit, begin with, in pre-meeting discussions with the clerk, the clerk thought that up, and I said, "Would that take care of it?", but we better put it in there, because if she had the question, other people will take it.
Okay, we got on the seat, the third reading, an ordinance establishing a, a board of zoning and appealing to Dillon County, South Carolina, the comprehensive plan, a dozen pursuits of the South Carolina Local Government Comprehensive Plan, and the neighboring Act of 1994.
Same motion to amend, to add that language.
Sir, I add the language, sir, to the appointed little chart.
Is that a suck?
I say it.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Now, add a motion to approve the amended ordinance.
Make a motion, sir, to approve the amended ordinance.
Okay, that's it.
I say it.
Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Bring the hand, but you don't hurt.
Okay, we have, um, D and a third reading, an ordinance by Dillon County, a meaning in the act in Dillon County Building Plan, that's the, this is the third reading, we have a motion.
A motion.
Prove the building from that.
Make a motion.
Okay, is that a suck?
A suck.
Okay, right, a suck, all in favor, raise your right hand. We want E, second reading, an ordinance by Dillon County Council to amend the fiscal zoning map of Dillon County to resume a parcel of land known as Tarif Smart, number 26, 273, from a residential to district RS2, to rule REU district, this requires a motion.
Now make a motion to have a second reading.
Is that a suck?
Suck.
All in favor, raise your right hand. On G now, first reading, an ordinance to provide for the 2015, 2016 fiscal year budget, requires a motion. Is that a suck?
I'll make it a motion. You think, you got lots of ordinances for that planning commission, I know.
Do, 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 do,[1538.12]
Uh, this is just basically what we're dealing with, we did the previous years, which is how, which is, we're basically doing it by pie lonely to get it started. Some project committee will have an opportunity to revise it.
I understand that, but I do have a problem with the language of the agenda, because the agenda said this is a budget ordinance. Is it a proposed budget ordinance, is a budget ordinance? Because if not, to me, it would need to be changed to say whether or not it's a proposed budget or a button.
Yeah, it's first reading for the proposed budget.
So it is actually the budget.
The actual proposed, proposed first reading for this year's budget.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to, I'd say this is first reading, we're going to have two more readings. I'm going to have a full council workshop, so if there's any questions, anybody wants to ask about anything, it'll be clear in your mind for the voting, especially before the voting of the third one, everybody's going to know what's in place.
And so, Mr. Chairman, may I finish with Mr. Young? All right, Mr. Young, the reason being, and I appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Chairman, and that's the right way to go about it, but in this case, at the moment, that was not the case. It's already proposed, and I haven't had time to look over it. But there's some things I looked over today, I certainly have concerns about. I have concerns about how did we come up with cutting the employees' bonus?
Uh, basically, all it did was balance the budget. And you could basically just say, I, you can make a recommendation, you just proved last year's budget like it did last year, and it would not be fine.
But we didn't, what I'm saying is, we did not cut their bonus last year.
No, we didn't cut it. We even kind of, basically, until this budget finalized, nothing's been cut or added.
According to what you, yeah, but I understand, because this, I understand what you're saying, I understand the language, I understand the step, where this become.
Hey, look, if you want to delay the reading, that's fine, it's, that's strictly up to council. If you don't want to pass the budget as proposed, you can, you can change it and modify it.
Only problem I got, Mr. Young, is with your language, is it a proposed budget, or is it the budget? What minute you says budget, next minute you using proposed budget, I, I.
That's what it says, it says, it says on there, first reading for a proposed budget for this fiscal year.
Well, tell me what change in your budget, and to, to cut employees' zone bonuses, that's what I'm asking for.
There's a lot of cuts in there, all it did was balance the budget at the time. Every year we pass it as a, as a, as a, um, a tight lunge, I don't know what the difference is, this year it was last year.
Doesn't?
Okay, we've had, we've had discussions.
I want to say something.
Okay.
Once we pass it, we just step closer, so we don't have the two readings to change them, to change, is that right?
Yeah.
But my thing is.
But you got two readings to, to, you got eight weeks to basically.
I understand that, but no council, probably except the budget meetings, had it on their lap until Monday. And you got a lot of mix-ups in there, so why wouldn't you just want to hold off till we could look at it more?
We need to get the first reading.
Well, it takes three reasons, public, period, public, period.
It's, it's been a discussion, uh, do we have a motion to?
Mr. Chairman, I, 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 only thing I'm saying is, here, we gotta be able to talk this stuff out.
Yeah.
Because if we can't talk it out, then, I mean, there's going to be another vote.
Well, there's no reason we can't have the first reading, because this reading not mean anything, we got two, two months to study this thing.
But I think the language in itself should be clear, as whether it is a budget ordinance reading or whether it is a proposed budget reading. That's the only confusion I got.
Mr. Chairman, we need to tell them about having a workshop.
Whenever it's completed, we all, and, and.
Before a second reading?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We'll have at least one or two before the second reading.
You can change it up until the, the third reading, the first reading, if not. If we can't get this budget worked out, eight weeks, we need to go home, god damn.
Well, why don't we just table this and just go together next week and have a full council?
Council workshop, never anybody have.
And then also have opportunities to, to.
Well, I'm, I'm telling me about the order, do we have a motion to, to, do you have a first reading?
I made that motion.
Is that so?
I say I have a first.
Only favor, raise your right hand.
Call a vote?
Actually, put me down in the polls, we spending taxpayer dollars, and the chairman thinks he sees, we got to watch right.
But it's, it's not real, don't pick up your head for a free.
Yeah, Mr. Bob, you know, the administrator told me Monday, that his plan was to give all county employees two hundred dollars instead of seven hundred.
Oh, I never said that, that's true.
You, you, you did not tell me that, that you were going to give a plate, you know, I'm a liar.
We not have, we have, we have, we have, we have, we have, we not have, we not.
I'm a grown man, just like you, but you remember that.
I remember that, we don't have that long, as long as I'm chairman.
I'm just telling you.
I got to have, I have control of this meeting, you can talk all you want to, and I'm going to tell the board.
I'm just telling you, when he said, he didn't tell me that, I'm going to tell him different. And I'll tell you different, we all wrong. He said right there, told me no money.
We, we did what I'm on, so.
Mr. Chairman, I do want to make one comment on the budget, if you, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Uh, the budget, everybody knows that the budget we passed last year, we, we, we spent the money that we took in. We went into our reserves. So I want everybody to thank, we have, eight weeks, we have to pass this budget. And I want everybody to thank, somewhere between three and five hundred thousand dollars is what we were short, and we keep raising our hand and spending money, but we don't think about, we got two ways in government, works the same way in my house. I have to have more money, or I have to cut my spend, and that's all I got to say, guys, we got eight weeks to figure out how to balance this budget.
Good enough.
Can I make another comment? Uh, we got weeks, we can balance it. We don't have harbor freight paid no more, that's a quarter million dollars, seven hundred something dollars on infrastructure. Now, we can't, and I know y'all say I'm arping on the engineer, but Mr. DeBoles's law firm got thirteen thousand dollars besides his pay last month. Now, if we sit up here on this council and let that go on, we are in trouble just like the rest of us.
One thing I'd like to say, Mr. Chairman, I quit, uh, only thing I'm saying, we just need honesty, that's all.
That's all we need.
We get honesty, and everybody's at the table, everybody knows what's going on, then certainly there shouldn't be no room for confusion.
Well, I guarantee everybody's going to look at the budget before we have a sorry meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That was good, we're already down to number nine, so it's down to number ten, that's the point.
Mr. Chairman, this comes back, what we discussed before, about most of these, I mean, the new ordinance is now being vacant, and, uh, council can, you make the point that they deem appropriate, they're all important, but the one that really meets on a regular basis is the planning commission, the appeals, and the tax appeals, you know, on a regular basis. They need to be appointed because they're all holdovers now, nobody, no one serving a term except at the top of the page, with no one in the planning commission serving a term, they're all holdovers. So I would suggest that the council, either this meeting, or certainly the next meeting, you know, find out who you want to nominate from your district.
You said for Dillon County, for the district, then?
You, you, each member makes a nomination, they don't have to live in your district, but they serve during the term of the council member per district. So, Scott, so your district is district, what's your district number? Yep, two. That person deserves three, that person deserves during the term of a member for district three.
May I make my point, Mr. Chairman?
The way we do this is, we'll start off with, uh, the planning commission first, and we can start off with district one, and then go to the district, people, who is it?
Nominate it, Chairman, then council after, for you.
All right, nominate.
All right.
We, we right now, we, we can point, people, the Dillon County Planning Commission, council from district one, you got a point?
Yes, I'm, uh, reappoint Justice King Gilfis.
Okay. Do we have to vote on this?
Yes, this is a nomination, now you have to call for a vote.
Okay.
Bobby district, Bobby district, too.
And you did it.
I think mine nominee is still good, isn't it?
Well, you'd have to make a, you'd have to nominate them to go, and then they'd have to have a call for a vote, which you'd have to take a, uh, uh, vote, have to actually vote on it, on your nomination, you make a nomination, and the council votes, but you didn't have the same person, yes.
I nominate Marvin Dorans.
Okay, uh, Marvin Dorans was then nominated for, uh, district, uh, district one, the Dillon County Planning Commission, is that so?
I say.
Only favor, raise your right hand. Okay, Bobby Moody, uh, district two, he, he nominated Joe McPhee Gilfis, is that so?
I say.
Okay, only favor, raise your right hand. Okay, district three.
I nominate Mr. Bobby McDuffie.
Okay, Mr. Bobby McDuffie, district three, only favor, raise your right hand. I didn't ask for a second.
I say.
Okay. Okay, district four, that's my district, Glenn Green Jr., I'd like to nominate Glenn Green Jr.
I'll say.
Is that so?
I'll say.
Only favor, raise your right hand. District five.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Hattie, Kenneth.
Okay, uh, this, is it a second?
I say.
Only favor, raise your right hand. District six.
Oh, district six, I don't have anybody.
You don't hear anybody in this town, okay, let's go down to district seven.
I don't have anybody.
Okay, good then. So with the Dillon County zoning board.
Mr. Chairman, I was asking seasonal issue to the two gentlemen, six and seven, would you like that on the agenda next time?
Yes, I'll have somebody next time.
Just sort of, or, or, stick back on the agenda.
Yeah, I have one next time.
Okay, Dillon County zoning board of fields, starting with the former, three, and, uh, your former district one, that'd be when you go. You got everybody, but mine for Dillon County zoning board of fields.
I mean, I got somebody to have a talk with. Who's there now?
Jerome. I can see that group.
This is district one, right now, between Jerome and.
Okay, he's, he's.
Okay, uh, we're going to district two, Bobby, you have anybody to put on the Dillon County zoning board of fields?
I'm, uh, reappoint Ray Brown.
Okay, is that so?
I say.
Only favor, raise your right hand. We're going down to, now the district three.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I like the real point, Mr. Weehat.
Okay. Is that so?
I say.
Favor, raise your right hand. Down to district four now, my district, I'd like to nominate James Earl Hayes, he's on there now, is that so?
I say.
Only favor, raise your right hand. District five. I like.
Should nominate Mr. Urban Cow.
Okay, is that so?
I say.
Okay, only favor, raise your right hand. District six.
I don't have any.
My name's Mick. District seven.
I don't have anybody, Mr. Scott, I have them next to me.
Okay, we'll go on. We're down to Dillon County Tax Appeal Board Member, and they do get paid when they go to the meeting.
They cut that out, didn't they?
Because I got an ounce of the providing ordinance, you have to put it in your, uh, budget ordinance.
They attend the meeting, they get paid.
And you put that in the budget ordinance.
But we have to put it in the ordinance, huh?
Yeah.
It's got to be in the budget.
Right.
Okay.
I know you tell me when they, they won't get no more pay.
Well, it's, it's in the budget, they do.
It's in the budget, but, you know, we have to make sure it's in the budget.
Okay, we got Dillon County.
Cow, you're right, it's in the budget.
Dillon County Tax Appeal Board, uh, district one, you have anybody around you?
Now, that's the first one, did you, this is the first one. That's the one that, I pointed him, that's the one I thought was good, and you say what?
Now, you had Miranda Manning for the planning commission, that was your person for planning.
Who?
Miranda Manning?
No, I don't, I don't know.
Okay, she's the one that was on planning commission, and for Jerome McQueen is the one you had for zoning board.
Oh, he's, you know, he's.
And for tax appeal, it was Marvin.
But that's the one, that's the one that I thought was the first one.
Okay, yeah, we got Marvin for.
Well, that would be number, number, for that, the other two, I'm going to have to come up.
Okay.
District two.
Who's going to have less time?
Mr. Goins, it's designed for. Mr. Goins, it's designed for.
Bobby, I think we had our.
My thing.
District two, you had a five.
Randy, I was feeling real warm.
There, there's.
I say.
There's, right, only favor.
He hasn't.
Fast.
District three.
That's who I got for district three.
Our process on this.
Yeah, young lady, stand up for it, please, I'd like to point this young lady, will you give your name, please?
Christina Fowler.
Christina Fowler.
This is motion, is that so?
I say.
Only favor, raise your right hand. Is it district four now, I'm going to reappoint the foreign breaking, is that so?
I say.
Only favor, raise your right hand. District five.
I'm going to reappoint Gerald Arnett.
Okay, is that so?
I say.
Only favor, raise your right hand. District six. District six.
I have my time, I just might.
District seven.
I'm going to reappoint Tom Row.
Okay, uh, it's been a motion for Tom Rowland, is that so?
I say.
Okay, only favor, raise your right. I think we got everybody now, you want to do a good one or a bad one?
I do want to know how I got Gerald in district five. I had never appointed Gerald Arnett, I appointed Alan, and then he, he dropped four, and he went, which is a good one. I never had a point on this one. But I, I, I ain't got the heart to take Gerald out. It rides by my house every day.
We, uh, we threw it upon, we're down to number eleven, executive session for contracts on matters, remember motion, going to executive session.
But, Mr. Chairman, the matters, you're going in, the Freedom Information Act requires that we state the purpose of executive session for the benefit of the press, um, and I understand that three matters, there are two proposed purchases, real estate, real property proposals, and there's another discussion in regard to a nuisance abatement. So it would be two, um, proposed properties purchases and discussion of a nuisance abatement, it would be the three, legal, three contractual matters.